Mrs. Chickamy is not here. Mrs. Cooper Trinidad is not here. Mrs. Walmalefy is not here. Mr. Giuliano?
Here.
Mr. Nuss?
Here.
Mrs. Whitty?
Here.
Mrs. Elbarry?
Here.
Mr. Giacchino?
Here.
We have a call.
Can you please join me in the flag seat? Oh, sorry. Please tell. The United States forever and civil republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Sussex wanted Regional School District Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the school building and notice of said meeting sent to the New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger.
The Sussex wanted Regional School District is a responsive, caring child-centered community. Our mission is to educate each individual to become a competent, competent, lifelong learner and productive, responsible citizen by providing challenging opportunities in a safe environment through a partnership of families, schools, and opportunities.
At this time, before we start the superintendent of schools, I'd like to fill the vacancy that Mrs. Stahl left when she resigned because she's moving out of town last month. We have one candidate that showed interest in filling the vacancy for the remainder of this year. And that's Stephanie Tortorella. So since there's only one candidate, I'm just gonna ask Mrs. Tortorella to come up and introduce yourself to the board and the public and if the board has any questions after that. More than three dots.
Hello, everybody. My name is Stephanie Tortorella. I live here in Sussex Borough and showing interest in joining the board to fill the vacancy for Sussex Borough. I went to all of these schools in the borough as well. I currently have two kids, one-year-old and two-year-old, who are going to be in the schools soon, but not too soon. That's pretty much my backstory. Mr. Paul, you seem like a very superior person to be in charge of this. I would love to work with all of your guys, honestly. This seems like a really good opportunity to me, not to mention my husband says I need a hobby, so.
That's a good hobby.
That's great. Well, thank you. Does the board have any questions from Mrs. Tortorella that you would like to ask?
No more jokes, guys.
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mrs. Tortorella to the Sussex Borough vacancy. And any discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Mr. Giacchino?
Yes.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yeah.
Mrs. Whitty?
Yes.
Mrs. Elbarry?
Yes.
Candidate is approved.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
Okay, so at this time, I'm gonna do the oath of office, so can you just start and then state your name?
Okay. Sure. I, Stephanie Tortorella, do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state. I give the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Stephanie Tortorella, do solemn swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law of office of member of Board of Education, that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1 nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in the NJHS 18A 12-1 and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mrs. Tortorella. If you're not, would you like to sit at the table with us and then you'll be able to vote starting next month, but.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And we're.
Let's sit together, let's sit.
Oh, we're not sit too close.
Yeah, those are too.
Welcome. Alright, so at this time, we will move on to the report of the superintendent of schools. I'd like to invite Mr. Schwartz up to present Sussex Middle School students of the Month this month. Good evening, Mr. Paul, Mr. Giacchino, members of our Board of Education and members of our audience tonight. It is with great pride that I stand before you tonight to present the student of the month. Every month, I have the pleasure of meeting with each of these individuals. And during these meetings, I am able to gain insight into their hobbies, favorite subjects, and extracurricular activities that they participate in. Each of these students tonight have been highly recommended by their teachers. And as I introduce you to each student, I will provide a brief snapshot of the wonderful accolades that have helped them earn the student of the month. In sixth grade this month, the recipient is Aslan Kruze. When I sat with Aslan, he told me that his name, Aslan, means lion in Turkish. When speaking with Aslan, he is anything but a lion in his classes. He is a kind-hearted and respectful student who is new to SMS this year. And it is clear that he's adjusting quite nicely. Aslan's teacher stated the following when recommending him for student of the month. Aslan is a kind student who often thinks of himself before, often thinks of others before he thinks of himself. He is always polite to adults and other students and respectful to people and property. He's a good student, he gets a hundred, ten percent to all of his peers. We are all looking forward to watching Aslan as he continues to get involved here at SMS. He is a wonderful part of our school community and we are excited to see all the people accomplish. It is with great pride that I introduce Aslan as the sixth grade student of the month.
Congratulations. Lucky Richard Digg.
It's real. Congratulations. In seventh grade this month, the recipient is Rhiannon Conover. When I sat with her, she told me that her favorite class was math. She indicated that she has always been strong in this content area and has always enjoyed it. Rhiannon would like to pursue a career as a hairstylist and looks forward to getting into Sussex Tech where she will learn even more about her studies and all that is possible with this career. Outside of school, she is a busy young lady. She plays field hockey, basketball, and softball. In which she is not on the field or in gym, she is traveling around showing cattle as part of the four H H beef club. When discussing this club with Rhiannon, it was evident that she truly enjoys the experience that she has had with this club and enjoys traveling. Rhiannon's teacher stated the following. Rhiannon Conover works hard in her classes. She participates in class and helps other students who need help. She has taken it upon herself to befriend her new students and help that students with tech issues and other school concerns. She has a bright and positive attitude and will certainly go far. It is with great pride that I introduce Rhiannon as the seventh grade student of the month. In eighth grade this month, the recipient is Anthony Longo. When I sat with Anthony, he told me that his favorite class was social studies. He indicated that he enjoys learning about history and the important facts related to the content and his teacher. When asked what career path he might be interested in when he gets older, Anthony indicated that his goal is to work in medical field. He has always been interested in helping and supporting others and he thinks that this type of career would allow him to follow that passion. Here at SMS, Anthony enjoys being a part of our volleyball and bowling clubs. Outside of school, Anthony, he found watching sports or playing with his Xbox. All his beloved Yankees are out of the race this year. He is looking forward to watching the Cleveland Browns and the rest of the NFL teams. Anthony's teacher stated the following. He has come so far as a student. He works well with his classmates, strives to do his best, is respectful and polite to everyone. He is a modestly citizen here at SMS. As we say goodbye to Anthony at the end of the year, I can say that he has had a tremendous impact on those around him. He will surely do the same. Please join me in congratulating Anthony. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Congratulations again to all the recipients. We always encourage folks, if you want to stay for the board meeting, sit and listen. If not, that would be an opportune time to leave. Congratulations.
Bring your jams.
Thank you.
Jams.
Congratulations.
You're good.
Thank you.
Just to report out on a few issues since the last meeting, just to give you an update on facilities. Facilities committee didn't meet, but we talked about an update on the CDO well system. So we're kind of basically out of describing limits terms. We're in a whole stretch of that system. They completed a pressure test on the system, noticed a few areas that they needed to improve upon, they're working on those. I don't have a, hey, we're gonna switch over on this date right now, but it should be in the very near future. Policy meeting met based on, based on we meet periodically, but also on some parent feedback and some school issues that we've been experiencing. And really want to crack down on cell phone usage, in particular at Sussex Middle School, you know, kids being adolescents in that regard. So we just had a meeting before this meeting to talk about how we would do that. I think we're kind of looking towards not permitting students to have their cell phones out anytime during the school day. You know, when I was principal of the wanted school, the rule was kind of cell phone needs to be off and in the bookbag. You understand that parents want to communicate with their kids for after-school type hours. And we're trying to evolve that into a Sussex middle school setting, you know, possibly off and in the locker. Unaccurate. COVID notification based on the feedback we got from Mr. Giddens last month. We issued a notification about COVID updates today, I think. And it basically gives the community access to a link on that letter that says, you know, if you so choose, you want to go out and look at what our COVID numbers look like. You can click on that link anytime at your convenience. Usually by the end of the week on Fridays, we'll post those from preceding week. So you have access to that information. Epidemiologist for the county in the meetings that I've been in has basically said you don't really need to do those things anymore. But, you know, after reflecting on the parent statement, some of the conversations I had with the board, I didn't really see perceived, you know, what's the downside of doing that? Throughout COVID, I got a lot of feedback at board meetings about please stop telling us with these notices about how many COVID you have. So I think this is kind of unfair balance. Several board members had the opportunity to attend the New Jersey School Board Association Convention this past week. You know, I found it to be very informative. Attended some seminars myself, met with a lot of vendors that would use and potentially could be using in the future. I don't know if anybody wanted to report out on any of the meetings that they attended.
I like the woodshop. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the things we've been talking about was trying to capitalize to provide students with more vocational opportunity as they get into Sussex Middle School. Many, many years ago, they had things like Olmec, Olmec here and woodshop. And we've been brainstorming, you know, how to potentially bring those back. I've gone around with administration meeting with teachers just to get their perspectives on it, listening to what kids had to say about it. And I, I remember having those courses myself in a high school setting. But we did offer them years ago at Sussex Middle School. And we've been brainstorming, you know, how potentially could we bring them back? Things like woodshops, you know, as you can imagine, the machinery and more importantly, the people who have certifications to teach that kind of stuff. That's hard to come by, you have to have the facility. So our long-range plan, we're thinking about doing something like that, right? Unless we gotta turn. But in the short term, you know, what can we do on a more immediate basis? And I copied the board and I met with the vendors down at school boards. They basically sell, you know, curriculum and, for lack of a better description, woodshop-type kits that aren't extensive as the heavy machinery you might have, like planes or circular sorts or things like that. But more geared towards middle school setting, elementary setting, even this company even works with grades as low as first. But prepackaged products that you can come into a school setting with. So we're looking at, can we integrate that in some way, possibly for next year? I don't want to overcommit or overpromise, but that's something we're really passionate about. Vaping, we met with a vendor, you know, you're more welcome to share your.
You're doing a good job, man.
We've met with a lot of vendors, so they, they talk about the products that they have and things like that. So we're contemplating piloting, they have vaping sensors. So not cameras, nothing intruding like that, but similar to like a smoke sensor in an area where you might have, or try to discourage that kind of thing. Not that we have any kind of increase in that, but we're looking at something like that. You know, the vendor's gonna send us out some samples, take a look at. Anybody else that I can use, tell it to you like, yeah. Then with our food service vendor, they do a nice presentation at school board. And they had some food items that, that were very intriguing, very good. And, you know, we're gonna approach them about, hey, can we get that type product disseminated in our, you know, maybe our middle school cafeteria or something like that? You know, it was like, it was like more, for lack of a better description, fancier salad. You know, feta cheese and grilled chicken and, yeah, yeah, yep. And if we have nothing else about school board, I'm gonna invite Mrs. Demalakis and Mrs. Henyon. We're gonna take like a two-minute break here, so they're gonna do a presentation on NJLSA and DLM testing.
Thank you.
Yep. We need a screener, Amy?
Yes. Good evening, Board of Education, I'm Ms. Chickamy. I'm Paul, I'm Mrs. Demalakis, and I'm the director of curriculum.
And I'm Mrs. Henyon. I am the director of special services and addition. And thank you so much for having us. I'm here to present today the NJSLA spring 2022 administration results. Each year, this is required by the Board of Education for us to present. Mrs. Henyon will be presenting authority on dynamic learning mass assessment and DLM assessment. That was taken in the spring. Now, please keep in mind, this, the NJSLA has not been taken by our students since 2018, 2019 school year. Keeping that in consideration as we review the scores, it was some of our students' first time taking a standardized assessment in this line. They have taken the New Jersey Star Show, which is a condensed version of this assessment. But it was our first time this past for taking this assessment. Alright, so I mentioned this presentation is repetitive, quite frankly, but it is mandated by the state. So I will be reviewing it quickly and focusing on our notable achievements and intervention strategies. So this specific chart discusses the disruptive levels and the percentage of students who fall in each level. It's from May 13, and this is specifically language arts. So for grade three, what we're, what our goal is, is meeting expectations of level four. And then also exceeding expectations level five. So thirty-one point nine percent of our students in grade three met or exceeded expectations compared to forty-two point four percent of the state level. Thirty-seven point three met or exceeded expectations in grade four compared to forty-nine point four of the state level. Thirty-nine point seven met or exceeded expectations compared to forty-nine point six of the state level. Wonderful to note, in grade six, seven, and eight, our students met or exceeded in the state's expectations. So forty-nine percent of our sixth grade students in language arts met or exceeded expectations compared to forty-seven point five percent statewide. Grade seven, fifty-seven point eight of our students met or exceeded expectations compared to fifty-two point seven statewide. And in grade eight, fifty-one point nine percent of our students met or exceeded state expectations compared to fifty, fifty-one point three percent statewide. So it's very great with the culmination of all of our staff and teachers, but especially at Sussex Middle School for our testing score for language arts. And as you can note, we do have a significant population approaching expectations as well. I'll flip it over to math, oops, sorry, flip it over to math now. In grade three, forty-eight point four percent of our grade three students met or exceeded state expectations. And that is higher than the statewide average of forty-five point four percent. So one of the third-grade teachers and community staff. Grade four, five, six, and seven, and then our students, the majority of our student population takes the Algebra One assessment. We did not meet the state, state expectations, a little bit lower, thirty-four point seven in grade four compared to thirty-nine point four, so right in the same range. Twenty-seven point seven in grade five compared to thirty-six point one statewide for grade five. Grade six, seventeen point three percent compared to thirty-one point three percent statewide. Grade seven, twenty-four point eight percent compared to thirty-four point one percent statewide. And Algebra One, fifteen point two percent compared to thirty-four point eight percent. Again, we do have a higher population approaching expectations. Some of this discrepancy could be, you know, not to blame everything on COVID, but COVID did have a significant impact on our students, as we know. Math, the use of manipulatives, especially in the earlier grades, that hands-on learning experience is very, very valuable. That may not have transferred over as well in a virtual or hybrid instructional setting where language arts popularity transferred over a little bit computer, but.
And I could also speak to the fifth and sixth grade, just interject briefly.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trying to teach long division, so you guys have all done long division, through a computer feels impossible. So I mean, that's a definite skill that you would have to learn during those grade levels. You need multiplication, but that long division, that by multiply, subtract, bring down. Trying to do that without being with the child is very difficult.
Um, thank you, Ms. Henyon. And then I do want to re-highlight our third grade again. Did an excellent job and surpassed the state level of met or exceeding expectations. Sorry. Science, only our grades five and eight students taking science assessment. Thirteen point nine percent in grade five met or exceeded state expectations. Where the grade five statewide average was twenty-five point five. And then the grade wide, grade eight statewide assessment average for met or, met or exceeding expectations. I'm sorry, here they call proficient or advanced proficient is fifteen point six and we had eight point three percent. So as you can notice, our, even the state's proficient and advanced proficient scores are rather low. And we, we did not meet in those areas as well. It is especially in grade six, nearing proficiency. We are, our district is at sixty-two percent of our population is in the level two, which is nearing proficiency. So our notable achievements again. Our notable achievements is I did grade three math. Forty-eight point four percent met or exceeded expectations compared to forty-five point four percent statewide. Grade six, forty-nine percent met or exceeded compared to forty-seven point five statewide. Grade seven, fifty-seven point eight percent of our students met or exceeded expectations compared to fifty-two point seven statewide. And grade eight, DLA, fifty-one point nine percent met or exceeded expectations compared to fifty-one point three percent statewide. And I'm impressed by that data from, you know, our, our staff and our students. Yeah, given all those challenges, that's okay.
I have a question.
Yes?
Do you have the metrics for the worst?
Please, sorry, say it again.
For the worst, you have the best. Do you have metrics of the worst before?
I can definitely provide that for you. I can do some quick math.
Not right now.
Okay.
I would just be curious.
Yeah, and it's funny, I have that. Okay, so here you go. I think we must have skipped this slide, because I was just looking at, I don't say, where did that slide go? But here it breaks it down. So if you see in grade three, our district, five point five percent of our students had the level one, which did not yet meet expectations. Where the state was thirteen point three percent. Level two, fourteen point three compared to eighteen point three. So is that kind of what you're referring to?
Well, I was more curious if you have grade three language arts. I don't know where it was.
Yeah, math.
I'm curious.
What were lowest?
What are, what is a grade four math below us? Like I, I'd be curious to see where you need improvement.
Yes. So in math specifically right here, grade six, only seventeen point three percent of our students met or exceeded state expectations. So those, in math specifically overall excluding grade three, we did score in the lowest ranges.
And I'll tell you, in those three grades, you're going to have division, fractions, and percents.
I understand that, but when you look at the state, they have the same situation.
And we're. Right.
Right. Right.
So.
Yep, mhm. Yeah, and then actually, let me go to the slide real quick. And as you can see in the state, the statewide percentages are in the, for math, right on here, I'm sorry. So the statewide percentage for math is forty-five point four percent in, in grade three. In grade four through eight, algebra being grade eight, they're in the thirties, like thirty percent of the state, students in the state met or exceeded expectations. So overall, as a state, we're seeing a decrease in math. And we've seen a decrease in math. Our scores are not aligning to those either. Yeah, and I think it's definitely important to know. And I will also post this PowerPoint presentation on our district website for a more thorough review. And please also feel free to contact me with any questions. So our notable achievements? I'm not going to list them. Yes, yes, it is. Um, we're in discussion of increasing time for tier-three instruction and exploring additional tier-three mathematics options on EK five. Outside of RCI, we're exploring math and science-based professional learning. Outside of RCI, we're exploring math and science-based professional learning opportunities, math and science were our lower performing areas. And investigating opposing plans or combination scripts for mathematics. We are providing PLTs, time to review supplemental materials, to those with any concerns or questions or really brainstorm with our educators about how we can enhance our performance. And currently, we have Intubating Program, which was adopted for the grade two, I'm sorry, K to two population last year. We have had success, and we feel like that program is addressing more of our needs than our previous program provided. Where now we're reviewing opposing positive expanding it to grades three to five. This program, sorry, we currently use the Readers/Readers Workshop in grade six to eight, oh, I'm sorry, three to eight. Grade six to eight, as you can see through the data, is really success, and one of the reasons for that is in the grade K to five, they're really learning to read. And they're really learning to read, K to two specifically is really learning to read, three to five is more reading to learn. But if we can continue that Intubating Program, which is a nice mixture of the Readers/Readers Workshop and an organized reading series, then we can hopefully enhance our scores overall. Any questions specific to NJLSA?
How about not specific? I just had a, I had a, yeah, we're gonna try it. So I got a call today from a parent complaining that the kids are in high school, saying that, there's a question, that there was no communication between our district, and I'm not saying it's the case, and high school. So that kid had five oh four here, and over there is, was put in like high functioning classes and causing a lot of stress. So when the parent called to school, they went, well, neither, nothing follows the kid, that's, that's what the parent was told. I don't think that's the case, but what do you do, like what's the protocol for an eighth grader going into like junior graders? What is, what is that?
So we, so five oh fours and IEPs are are.
Legally mandated, doctor.
Legally mandated, and they transition from one setting to the next.
But so you're probably getting yes up there.
We can comment, you know, we would refer you to the high school.
Yeah.
Fire about that.
I would like to.
And we would certainly not characterize it in that manner, Mr..
Okay. All right, I got you.
Phone number is nine seven three five three one on one.
No. As kids are transitioning up there, councilors also come down here with staff, help make schedules and things like that.
Well, no, I haven't. I haven't had issues, you know, I just got it fit in my car and, you know.
Yes, absolutely, any other questions?
We are, we are still going to have like the meetings that we have with high planes as part of where they're coming.
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah, I believe those actual scheduling is even special for everybody.
Yeah, usually.
And not, not the ones with the kids, the ones with like, like when we were behind in the math and everything, the math department heads came down and talked for math, they got.
Mr. Scores meets regularly with the high class.
Right, okay.
Any other questions or concerns specific to the NJLSAs or not? Okay, I'm now going to go to Ms. Hanyan to review the DLM.
Okay, the Dynamic Learning Assessment. Dynamic Learning Mass. It's going to be graded or assessed much differently than the NJLSA. Generally speaking, it's a very small portion of our population who takes the DLM. It is going to be the population of students that they, they can't take the NJSLM, or I'm sorry, NJLSA. Due to different cognitive disabilities, and so they have assigned different criteria. Emerging is the first stage, the student demonstrates emerging understanding and ability to apply content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements. Approaching the target, the student's understanding of an ability to apply targeted content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements is approaching target. At target means the student's understanding of an ability to apply content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements is at target. Advanced means the student demonstrates advanced understanding of an ability to apply targeted content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements. There's core essential elements that are listed and what they're actually testing for. So we go by grade, we only had two individuals that took the language arts and the math. One was considered advanced and the other one was emerging with their skills, and that would be a fifty percent where our school stood within the third grade. For fourth grade, we again only had two students that took this particular, took this, I know, I can see Mr. Nuss's wheels are turning. I know, we only had two students that took this assessment. They both were emerging in language arts and math, and then if you look, they were both in target. If you look like, or one was in target for language arts, one was in target for math, again, brought us to fifty percent. Two students from the sixth grade were tested, and they also had, we had two emerging in math. And for ELA, we had one at emerging and one approaching the target, which means we didn't meet our expectations there with the targeted or advanced. With ELA in math in seventh grade, we had three students that were tested. One was in ELA, was approaching the target, and two were at target, which brought us to sixty six point six percent. And for math, one was emerging, one was at target, and one was advanced, again, sixty six point six percent. In eighth grade, they took the science section as well, that was, your difference would seem third, fourth, sixth, and seventh grade, eighth grade there. We had five students take the DLM. Two were emerging in language arts, two were approaching target, one were at, one was at target, brought us to twenty percent. The scores were basically the same in math and in science, bringing us all to twenty percent. Again, I know it's assessed much differently, for those of us who are a little bit more familiar with IEPs and the progress indicators, you'll know if you get the progress indicator page, they usually will say like, it's very similar, it's like emerging, progressing, and there's different categories which are very similar to these. And so when the parent does see it, again, it's very similar to what they usually get with the progress indicators with their IEPs.
Thank you so much for having us, any other questions regarding us?
I don't think, maybe I missed it, how come there's only two students?
Right, because those other students took the NJLSA.
So a very small group is an actual meeting, very small.
Yeah, they're very like multiple.
But everyone had the opportunity, it's not like we just limited it.
Exactly, so they.
They're qualified.
Right, if they.
Okay. I'm going to go along with you.
Right, and so if they're, don't have the cognition to take the NJLSA, then usually then they'll take the DLM.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for having us.
And that concludes this portion.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. At this time, we will move on to audience remarks. Members of the audience are invited to make brief comments about items on this agenda and matters of interest to the district. Would you just come to the podium and state your name and your town of residency? Anyone want to go first?
So my name is Caesar Frapano from Wantage. Once again, on the cell phone topic, I know you kind of hit it right off the bat that you guys want to eliminate it or have it so the kids just hold it. I would just like to see a policy be formed, and when can we expect policy?
So about, literally right before the meeting started, we were working on that. And we started working on it after, you know, the last board meeting, and we convened to have a meeting about it to get some feedback on it. From here, we'll make some final kind of modifications to it, probably have the attorney look at it. And then generally speaking, it takes two readings of the board meeting. They could probably do one, you know, to suspend the two readings rule, right? No, it shouldn't take two readings.
But what, two months?
Yeah.
December will be the second reading. I believe the administration has already taken steps to prohibit cell phones in the middle school. But that will be a policy.
Okay, so that takes away from lunch, well, school hours in general? So that they'll be able to have that before school and then after school.
Yeah, as soon as they come into school, it will go in their backpack in dismissal, I mean, not dismissal, arrival, and then they have to put it in their locker. As soon as they have an opportunity to, there will be no, no cellphone usage during any of the classes, during lunch. And then they can, they're supposed to not use it again until they're dismissed, till they're dismissed.
All right, cool, I mean, I did that thing I was looking for, I'm really happy to see that you guys are pushing for that as well, and it's in motion. Is there anything that we can do to help finalize it and push along? I know I spoke to multiple families after the meeting, that that person who was there, they were thrilled about it, had like five or six families come up to me, and I was like, hey, thanks for talking about it. You know, my daughter got that, or my son got one, it was a problem, you know, whatever their situation, I was like, I was shocked, I was just speaking behind that.
Yeah, I don't think you meet any resistance, I mean, I don't think I'd be wrong about that, from the board approving it. I think that you probably will come across people who disagree with it, and if you can help spread the, hey, this is why they're doing that, that would be great.
You come to the meeting.
I don't know, it's like a rap, I was expecting to come here and really like push it.
It's very encouraging hearing it come from a parent, that you see that there's parents, that even if there's one, that this is time to come.
Well, I'm not the only one, a couple of people are here as well, and not, not to come to speak, but, but as support showing faces like, hey, this is what we're doing.
That's great, you know, we're definitely going to pass it, there'll be a policy November meeting, and then the second reading in December. So it'll be done by the end of the year on the books, but again, I believe the administration is implementing it seriously.
Perfect. Actually, you know, we can't solve every issue, but I feel like my time here, various board members have come along and administrators have always take it seriously and try to bring some degree of resolution to it, try to work the problem, you know, even if the answer isn't immediate.
I got you, I appreciate it. Now, my other thing would be on sex education, what's being taught, at what grade level? Now, unfortunately, I didn't do enough research, I know I got one for my kid, and the thing that we're being taught, I was kind of like, whoa.
Yeah, so we have that, you, what you're talking about, the opt-out, right?
Yeah, you get opt out, which is, which is awesome.
Yeah.
But then, you know, as I'm thinking about it, well, these other kids are learning about this, I think of too young an age, and now when they leave that classroom, they're going to talk about it. Now we have kids that are informed somewhat and that aren't informed on it, and what's that lead to? Like, you know, kids being curious and, oh, you know, I heard you could do this and not get pregnant at this age? So a lot of it was just kind of, I, I need to do more research and bring it back up.
So the board, the board's been adamant in having dialogue and conversations about all of that, you know, I'm sure you've seen other news about
Yeah.
state New Jersey's learning standards, so we can't really do anything about the learning standards, but the board can authorize the curriculum, so how we approach those standards. And Mrs. Demalak, as the lady who gave this presentation on the test scores, actually spearheaded that with surrounding districts. So all those curriculum guides and things, like you can look at detail on our website, and I can shoot you a bomb and email, you know, with exactly.
Yeah.
We tried to highlight some of the things that we thought people would say, like, you know, we have questions about that on that opt-out.
Yeah.
Just so you have that, and, and you know, the only other thing I think I would say on the board decree, there's no substitute for parenting.
Yeah.
I like having conversation, I'm learning, I have a sixth grader, you know, my daughter, who has a cell phone and who's at an age where she's examining, you know, this kind of content, like, and it's easier said than done.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I let my wife handle some of it, all of it, but, you know, it's an interesting, you know, age of adolescence and development.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like a lot of it's not age appropriate, like I said, I do have to go through it and kind of look more into it.
Yeah.
But what I saw for seventh grade, I was kind of like, whoa, why are they learning about this already? Why is that even out there?
Yeah.
You got to remember, like, we, I'm speaking for most of us, we don't have kids much older, so we need to hear it from you, so.
And I, you know, I will, I will say.
I'm totally.
No, I'm a hundred percent with like, parents coming back out and talking to you guys and making the difference, because a lot of things that we see in general, I'm like, whoa. And, and a lot of it's the state mandating you guys, so, hey, what does it take to push back to the state and be like, hey, no, I'm not all right with this? And.
Well, you need to come like you're doing, and then that will allow, I mean, how.
I think there's been no, I don't want to cut you off, but there's been no bigger advocate of the ballot box than Mr. Dagaskin.
Yeah, right, no, I definitely want to push that way, and I know there's a lot of parents that are feeling the same way. And they're kind of just letting the state bully us into, hey, this is what your kid's going to learn, hey, this. Okay, when did parents stop being parents, you know? So I, I think I still kind of know what's best for my kid, I'm not just going to leave it in arms and arms.
You do.
No, you do, we're not, we're, but I'll speak for myself, but if you have concerns like that, I want to give them.
You do, you do.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't, I don't hear it, so, I don't mean to, you know, stay, I'm.
Yeah, well, like I said, I want to look more into it, and then I'm sure at the next board meeting, I'll have, I'll have more to say, I feel like you guys are going to see my face a lot more. But that's it, I'm glad with the whole cell phone thing, and it's moving forward and on to the next one.
Yeah, this, you know, as they said, this board's always been extremely pro, pro-parent, and, you know, when things are mandated, we, you know, we pass resolutions, sending it, and, you know, even sent to the state in a couple of cases, expressing our, expressing our disappointment. You know, with the, you know, the masks mandates, vaccines, you know, sex.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what we're, we're here for, you know.
You know, sex ed curriculum, you know, we're, like, again, we're pro-parent, we don't think there's any replacement for parents. It's supposed to be a partnership, not a takeover, you know, by the schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we try to keep doing everything we can within our power, you know, a lot of, they hold you hostage a lot of the times, too, with the threats of taking millions of funding away and everything else, it's disgusting, but.
And I don't, I don't follow their meeting schedule, but the state has a Board of Education that means has regular meeting times. Probably vocalize to them in some manner.
Yeah, yeah, I feel like when it comes to states by numbers, like just my voice saying, they're like, oh, okay, who cares about us either? But when there's thirty, forty other parents saying, hey, okay, we're not paying for this either, maybe we can make a difference.
Absolutely.
You know, who I should be again.
Absolutely, thank you again for coming to the, to the meetings, it makes, it makes a difference.
Awesome, all right, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Leah Gunther, I'm a sixth grader S M S. You might recognize me because I just took sixth grades in September. Before I say my speech, ask yourself this question, is two miles worth of my life? Since kindergarten, I've always been going to such a funny school district. This year, I moved to another hospital. I'm still having my parents crazy, able to keep me in the district with all my great students. But I love you for what you're doing, it's one very large issue I have with you, that is why I'm here. I'm hoping you can all help me, my issue is my bus stop. On days I have to walk my bus stop, I will shoulder the weight, I have to walk on the road. My all the words of the stress start going to, so we'll have to get an email of where the bus stop would be. When she brought it up, that there was no safe way to get to the bus stop, she was told, getting to the bus stop was the parent's job. So my mom tried to differ with us in hopes that they could help. That person told you that we shouldn't be walking on the road because it isn't safe, and that she should drive us every time. This didn't really solve the problem. I don't, I don't have a driver's license, and I will not have one for a very long. I don't, I don't have a driver's license and I will not have one for a very long time, but I had a lot of years of school left. If my mom cannot drive me to the bus stop, how will I get to school or come from here? And I need to be able to get to school. My that occurs whenever I think about it. Sometimes so bad, I requested me anyone to throw up. I told my four everything I was feeling, first about the walk and being scared of getting hit by a truck. They were so close to me and I just drive so fast. They don't scare, oh, what happened in the winter? When there was even winter, I walk. Once my mom told me they don't want to walk, and my stomach didn't go away, they only got worse. What happens if my mom is sick and cannot drive me? What if my mom's broke down and at the shopping list and it's more than today or you have to wait for that part? What happens if my mom's car won't? What happens if my mom loses her license? These are all things that could happen and I don't, I don't have no way to get to school. Some might think just have your dad take you, but my dad's struggling as three seats. So there are another seats for all of us. I have a younger brother and a little sister who have to go to school too. So if something happens to my mom's car, we don't all have a way to get to school because walking is not a choice of all my other friends have. I'm in a van classroom this year, not because the school comes easy for me, but because I work hard at it. Last month, Mr. Schwartz told you all that I wanted to be a nurse. And I want to be a free, cause I want to help people make a real difference in their lives. If I'm just at school, I know I will not be able to get, keep up and not even be able to do what I want. Would not, or at least not be the best I would be. I'm scared for myself. I'm scared for my little brother and my little sister. My mom will not say anything to me, but I know she's scared. I just want to be able to get a newspaper, not worry about losing myself, or I don't know myself. Please show me a safe bus stop that I can get to. I just want to be able to get to school every day that I am home. So I can be the best at my job that I can be. Please help me find a new way anyways when that happens. Please show me that I matter.
Thank you for uh for coming, Leah, for coming.
Cuz.
Uh, yeah, again, we're doing everything we can. So I appreciate you coming and voiceing your concerns. Are there any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Leah Gunther and I am from the Walk District. Um, I would like to get some pictures of her. These are some of the pictures. Of the walk, they describe.
Thank you.
I do have some of our actual bus stop also that was assigned for the district, Transportation Department. As you probably can tell, I am Leah and Jackie and that is mom. Um, and she's a very hard act to follow. Um, where I hope not to read off my paper. I'm gonna have to stick to whatever it is. Um, but Leah is exactly right. We have a huge safety concern regarding our bus stop at the corner of Mount Salem and Greenville Road. We recently just moved from look one location in Wantage to another location in Wantage. When looking for a house, Wantage stayed on the top of our list. Why? Because we love this district. It is our eighth district, our eighth year in this part of the district. And I've never had an issue with with our district ever before. And that says a lot coming from a parent with a child in special education for eight years. We currently right now reside at nine eighty-five Greenville Road. For those of you that are not aware of the nature of Greenville Road, it's not one that most adults would even walk on. Greenville Road is also known as Cabbie Road five nineteen and is located at the base of High Point Mountain. It is often used as a cut through to and from Route twenty-three, from Route eighty-four and Route six. It is often tracked him by not only local traffic, but large commercial vehicles that use it as a cut through. So they don't have to go up and over High Point Mountain. Greenville Road has a speed limit of fifty miles an hour. One of the very few residential spots or any spots in our town that has that speed limit. Even where twenty-three meets Greenville Road, it's only forty-five miles an hour. So basically, you get off the state highway, you step on a gas and that's fine on our route. It's not straight or flat. It has various turns and elevations. Most part of Greenville Road and Mount Salem does not have any cell phone service or any network at all. So if an emergency or injury happens, there is nothing to do. Houses are spaced out and have longer driveways and large wooded property lots. And many are woodland assessed because of the nature of the road and the nature of people's yards. If someone was to yell out, would be yelling for help, it would likely go in the direction of the car. But our biggest problem with Greenville Road is the shoulder. I've seen in pictures, one leg can be getting the guardrail while the other is into the road, over clearly over the white line. Guardrails run up both sides of Greenville Road. And on the other side of those guardrails are ditches and drainage trenches. So walking on the other side of these guardrails is not possible. Therefore, we're left with no choice in many locations, but you'd be in the road. And that's on perfect conditions. I've yet to experience a shoulder with snowbanks. Besides the even more reduced shoulder, weather plays another important part in this road. As you can see what it looks like on a Friday morning, many drivers, sorry, many drivers have visual problems seeing in front of them. So since the start of our school district, our district transportation department has three kid, my three kids and myself pinned up against a guardrail walking at a fifty mile an hour Cabbie Road for over a mile each way, armed with flashlights. And this is against on what could easily be tractor trailers, dump trucks, fuel trucks or other large vehicles that have little visual clearance in front of them. And are not used to seeing people on this road. And that's why I'm here tonight. I had high hopes that when I brought this to the district transportation department, it would be fixed. But instead, I was met with the transportation department saying state minimums and safety being a parent's concern. Honestly, I'm shocked. Our district strives for state minimums. That's what we're going for? Does our district really not take consider of safety in consideration when making a bus stop? This is not a bus stop for anyone else. This was made by our district this year. I asked many times, what's the point of a bus stop of a setting in district if students can't get to them? What is the point? Does our transportation not know the nature of this road or even this stop? If a mistake was made or overlooked, I can understand that, but why are we not being proactive in fixing this? Before something terrible or catastrophic happens? I started asking these questions in August, not just to other parents, but to the district. How could this be, the district I was so proud of was failing us in a physical safety concern? We're not talking about all the what ifs that could happen on this road. And trust me, I have a whole list. We're talking about what is, and what is is we have three students walking on a fifty mile an hour county interstate road with no shoulder came up against a car drop for over eight miles. We're not talking fifty feet, it's a mile of this. Another parent was shocked after seeing the pictures. They were kind enough to point out that our district has bylaws and policies for this. Our district has hazardous road policies in its bylaws. And it states that kids will be bused if they live on a hazardous road. According to our district, a road with no shoulder can be a reason for it to be deemed deemed hazardous. A road with high velocity can be deemed as hazardous. Please look at your pictures again. There's no shoulder. There's no sidewalk. And this is one of the fastest roads in our town, faster than some parts of twenty-three. And think of the kind of traffic on this road. It's not just development traffic. If this isn't a hazardous road in our district, what is? It's been brought back up that there's losses for students in the same boat. And I realize some are asked to walk as far as my kids kids are asked to walk. Again, I'm not here because of the distance. I'm here because of the safety issue. Out of those supposedly other district students, how many of them are not a late development or back township road? How many are on a county road? How many of them have meter inches of shoulder and how many of them are a fifty mile an hour road? And then how many of those students can keep three states over in less than five minutes? Three states. Honestly, if there are others, they honestly should come too. I'd like to point out that we filed our address change on the same day we're moving feds and trespassers over. All the needed proof of residence, bills, documents, cases were submitted correctly and on the same day. When we received the bus wrap of Mount Salem and Greenville Road, I brought the safety concerns up within hours of the district sending it to me and minutes of me opening the email. Our district has been aware of this since August. After many emails and sending pictures, the district did come back and said they wouldn't want any student walking on the road of this nature and that the parent should drive them. So now for students that have safe access to education, comes down to the family's ability to have a car? Like we have to point out, life does happen. With saying, with saying that they have to be driven leaves her no choice if something does happen to myself or my vehicle. I've reached out to many people. I've asked questions and I've picked minds regarding this bus stop and this road. I've spoken to law enforcement, bus drivers, tax and credit property owners in regards to not only this stop, but the ability to drive down Greenville Road. Everyone I've spoken to does not understand why this hasn't been fixed. I've spoken to a person that has years and vast knowledge of the busing, of busing and of Greenville Road, not just on a personal, but also on a professional stand standpoint. Most would say that this, that this person, no one knows more about busing and no one knows more about Greenville Road. I did this because I really wanted to truly understand, was I asking for too much? I, he reached back out for the phone call and said, you're absolutely one hundred percent correct in questioning this. And that my concerns were correct and that this is a hundred percent doable. And safety is always, should be a concern for every citizen of Wantage. And most importantly, it should, it is always a concern of anyone in the busing field. I've learned that the corner of Mount Salem Road has never been a bus stop before for our district. It was just made this year. We're the only students assigned to it also. I would like to also note that there's no shoulder to walk on, nevertheless squeeze my car on. And to top it off, there's an electric fence. So when I do drive, my kids have to squeeze out of the car and hope not to get sacked. And again, there's no cellphone service for emergencies arise. Parents know we get the honeyball call, bus one oh three, bus three oh six, they're twenty minutes late. I don't get that either. I've spoken to the sheriff's department. They went out in a professional manner and did an inspection of mountain road turnaround. And they said, turning the bus around is not an issue. It can be done. I've learned and would like to point out that students have lived past Mount Salem before. And when they did, the bus turned around at Greenville Road. One of the stops was directly across from my residence. They not only stopped down Green, they only stopped coming down that end of Greenville Road when students stopped living past it. I called the busing company. They said turning around the bus was not the issue. They said the issue was our district. Our district designed the stop at Mount Salem and Greenville Road. They don't know my address. They based it on what the district assigned me. Because of that, Mount Salem and Greenville is the address that we are on their bond for. If we were assigned by the district nine eighty-five Greenville Road, that is what we would have been bonded for and it is where we would be getting picked up. But instead, according to them, our transportation department made its new stop when it could have easily made it at nine eighty-five Greenville Road. I realized districts make errors and things are overlooked. No one is perfect. And I don't expect them to be, but I would like them to fix this if this is an error. Cause these are my kids and the transportation department's choices have affected their well being. This can be fixed. I'm not sure if you will fix it. I realized that things cost money and that's probably the real reason this isn't getting fixed. If my children aren't worth that dollar amount for getting fixed this year, will it be fixed for next year when bonds are remapped and busing is redone? It would cost any, no one anything then. Will this always be an ongoing problem? I'm not asking for anything that hasn't been done by our district before. There have been district bus stops past Mount Salem Road when kids lived past Mount Salem. I'm not asking for the bus company to do anything that past busing companies haven't done or they themselves haven't done by turning around at that road. I'm just asking for my kids to have safe access to their bus stops. So they can have safe access to their education. No child access to education in sending district should depend on if a parent has a working car. Again, as we have pointed out, life happens. And because the nature of this road, driving to the bus stop is not a choice or a luxury like it is for her peers and classmates when their parents drive them. Our district has made it clear that this is our only choice. We know our district and our transportation, I know that our district and our transportation department can do better than state minimums. I know this because if they went off state minimums, there'd be other, there'd be other kids at this bus stop. There are other students that live far closer. And this whole route is filled with people that live way closer than one mile to each other. This whole route has bus stops basically every point one miles. That's five hundred, about five hundred feet. Point one miles is basically that this whole stop, not one person on Greenville walks. Not one person on Mount Salem walks. Not one per person on Central School walks. Not one person on Unionville walks. And again, like I said first, no one on Greenville Road walks but my children. Our district and our board has the ability to fix this error. Our district can do better than having three students walk a mile with no shoulder. No shoulder. It comes down to will the board have them do better? Will you have them fix this error and be proactive? I'm hoping you knew, not just for my family or for any future families that plan on buying houses past Mount Salem, but because there's three kids in the audience, especially an eleven year old, your star student, and she's taking note on what is more important. Like Leah said, one round trip, one round trip is a little over a mile each way. Think of your kids, would your kids be worth it? If I had to say, I would say your kid and any child is worth one mile. You, but you will be the deciding factor if my kids are worth that.
Thank you, Mrs. Duncan. Thank you, Leah. You did great job. Just based on a couple of things you said, I'm just gonna go back and get some clarity with my department on that and I'll be in touch.
Okay.
So I have a problem with that. I mean, I've talked to you enough enough of times and um, I don't know how the board feels, but I I don't have the best memory, but I, when I went to school here, I remember turning around. I don't know, it's probably like forty years ago, but I know it's a different bus company, up in that area.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a different company. It's probably different management and leadership.
Right, but like what you're, what you're saying, it's not a money issue, like I think it's, like, I don't, I myself would have no issue. I'm curious, when she sent the letter in and our transportation guy, what was the process that picked her spot? I don't, I don't wanna explain you the answer, but why, but like, like, why that?
Uh, yeah, I don't know how the spots are generated. I think our transportation does that, our transportation.
Maybe she can come to a meeting.
However, my understanding is that the turnaround was deemed unsafe by the company.
Correct.
We solicited the company to um, you know, price out what it would be to go further. They gave us a general idea of what that would be and then said, but hang on, we have to decline that. We can't fulfill that responsibility.
Cause of the time that.
And my understanding is it would make all their other commitments um. And my understanding is it would make all their other commitments um would would you know loop jibe with their other commitments. You know, they service not just us, they service other.
So I have a question.
So I so hold on, I have a question, because my kids are on this bus. So it's unsafe for a bus to turn around right where right after their driveway, but it's not unsafe for my kids to have to cross the road. And I was here at a board ed meeting, Ethan's in fifth grade, so three years ago, where Ethan almost got hit by another car coming the other way. And I asked transportation if we could flip the bus route. So in the morning, my child gets on door side and in the afternoon, he gets off door side, so they don't have to cross over. So it's unsafe for the bus to turn around in a loop and I'm I'm not getting I'm irritated about it, but I'm not yelling at anyone. But it's okay for my kid to get off the bus and cross over the road. And we had a substitute who doesn't even point over, our new bus driver this year, she I don't even think she's looking at the kids when they cross the street. I mean, there's a whole slew of things that could possibly go wrong. I mean, obviously, her bus stop is a severe one because they should be getting picked up at their driveway. But that whole road is a hot mess. I took pictures, sent them to transportation last year. We had our bus facing my driveway and a tractor trailer next to it. Because the guy came barreling along, CRA trucking and he couldn't stop in time and had to come next to the bus. Side by side, so if another car was coming, there would have been a real hot mess. And that was right after Glen Road. So the whole that whole route up there needs like serious work because someone is going to get killed. And I hate to say it, but it's gonna happen. I see it all the time, snowbanks, this, that, everything else, people fly on that road, they have no recollection of even where they are, what they're doing. And they do, they cut across, you have New York, you have Pennsylvania, Jersey people, like it's bad. And I was here three years ago because I didn't want Ethan to cross the street and now I have three kids crossing the street. And her kids have to walk on the side of the road, ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. That's just my rant of it all.
Get more people's go ahead.
Get a cop to sit there and start.
Yeah, so you know, a little bit of background on some of Ms. Duncan's concerns, is I've kind of gone on record with the some of the law enforcement agencies you've talked to and given them the contact information for the company. That if on their judgment, they can have the company change their position, I'm fully supportive of it. But I can't substitute my decision for theirs.
But you're getting, just so um there's third, you're getting the bus company saying they deem it unsafe, correct?
Correct.
And you are getting, and then well, this is why, because I've spoken to you.
So I can, I'm gonna schedule a meeting with the bus company at our transportation coordinator and see if we can come to resolution. Say the bus company.
But but like, well, here's here's the thing, you're in both sides. I want a name from you who's telling you the way to do it.
Right.
Because then we can see where this.
Yeah, I mean, is it the management of the company?
Yes.
Correct.
Alright, I mean, I'm not for me, like I only have a few more months here, but I'd like to get this resolved.
As as I agree always.
Right, but if there's a disconnect, if you're being told that bus company is telling you yes, like I just want to make sure, right, you told me, they said yes.
Yes.
But we're hearing that.
But we had we had tried writing from, I mean, we had written from the bus company, their their position on it.
Correct, so I didn't say that to them, so we have in writing that it's unsafe for the bus company.
It would be interesting.
So somebody's, somebody is like not being honest.
And we heard also how much it would cost them to change the bus.
Well, and the one the one the one the transportation department, from what I understand. So. So change, well, my understanding of what we're talking about changing a bus would be going to a secondary stop that they deemed was more appropriate, going into Greenville, New York. They gave us a general idea of that, didn't seem unreasonable to me. I don't have the opportunity to bring that figure to the board because they said, sorry though, we can't take, we can't fulfill that.
Right, then why?
And to give you the overreaching ideas that aside from this particular issues, there's a, you know, I'm gonna call it a crisis with bus companies throughout, not just the country, but our area. Um finding drivers, you know, and I've experienced personally, two of my bus runs a week before school started canceled. I had to scramble and change a school schedule to be able to transport uh you know, two thirds of my population to school. Like, so there's there's challenges beyond just individual bus stops and things like that. So I don't know if that plays into it, I don't speak for them, but you know.
Can I ask you, how how did that happen though? But we're we seem to be moving backwards instead of forward, like I've got one that graduated at the school already, so I I know where that was at. I mean, my issue is small compared to what it was, but my son lives half a week with me, half a week with his mom. We had the opportunity where he could get a bus each we we week and I think it was last year, maybe it was the year before. They said no more, you one house gets a bus and the other one too bad.
There's a shortage of drivers and the bus companies in my perspective can't fulfill runs. You know, we we have this school year covered, you know, I I projected to future, so it's warranted and get position in sense that we also have some of our own bus runs, I don't know how long we'll be able to maintain that, but generally speaking, there's a shortage of bus drivers. You Google that.
But I wanna, I wanna go back real quick. We were told it's unsafe by the bus company, turn around in that area where the house is.
And then.
And that's.
No backing in the driveways, not turning around, then next, it's been communicated to me, the next safest opportunity is going into Greenville, New York, which they can't fulfill.
Right, and they said even if even if somebody deemed it safe, that they still wouldn't do it because of the time, right, that it would take to do it.
The turnaround, no, what I said was if the law enforcement agency, who I have tremendous amount of respect for and the judgment of the individual, although he doesn't drive a bus. Um was to communicate with the company and say, hey, listen, you know, come to a a general consensus and say, you know, Mike, we we reconsidered, we can do that. I would fully supportive of it, why wouldn't I be?
Now who would have to pay for it because they're sort of coming at me that they do not want to be out the money.
That particular one. Nobody's communicated that to me, to my knowledge, the Greenville issue, you know, gave us a general figure, so that would be off seven lines. Um but the turnaround piece, which I think is the mountain road turnaround, I'm not positive about that.
Yeah.
Um I don't I don't know what figure on that would relate to me.
Okay, because that is only five hundred feet.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's so that's my understanding isn't isn't not a safe, you know, it was communicated to me that not a safe.
What's the is mountain road the where that round is?
Oh, it's old mountain road, is that?
Old old mountain road, it's the dirt road that goes on the left.
It's old mountain road, yeah.
It does.
And the and the old bus used to turn around there and sheriff's department said that is a safe place to turn a bus.
And the bus.
In the current bus department that we have right now has turned around there, according to our last pressure.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I can shed on and why I might shed on that is that I, you know, I don't know how long ago that was. And my just my personal take on things, a few years back, you had a tremendous tragedy that occurred on Route eight, Route eighty, coming from a Burton County school district where I believe a driver made an error, I can Google that on the news and stuff, they were going to Waterloo Village, I think. And just my take on it is ever since then, transportation companies have been much more strict about the processes they use. Just my take on what, you know, trying to connect to that.
That bus driver was very around on the.
Hey, will you share with me?
On Route eight, like that's crazy though, that should be totally irrelevant.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, I didn't get the letter, there's email.
Email, oh, that's on time.
I think Mr. Paul summarized all that.
I I believe that one of the companies even talked to another company about doing it for them type thing, not to get their opinion and that company declined too.
So then are we really providing my kids with busing, our district? That would still be considered, so there's no way of getting my bus taken money back is having a child have to be driven to a bus stop. Is there a van? Well, yes, I'm open to anything, you want to send a small van that's already been in use, if you have the double back for my kids, send a small van. We're open to anything.
Yeah, like I said, I think the best thing at this conference, based on one or two things that, one or two points that you made, your diligence, great job. Uh I'm gonna follow up with my transportation folks and see, you know.
And if if it is truly just timing, why are some of these other stops not combined on this route? Because it's point one miles for almost every single one.
Yeah.
There are no com, there are very few, meaning I think there's just two communal bus stops.
One of the things, again, I'm not trying to instill any sort of concern throughout the community, but coincidentally and ironically, I had conversation with our attorney a couple of months ago, unrelated to you or any of these bus stops, but it was about transportation shortages and the lack of drivers. And how districts, I don't know if you're exposed to or you work with, that is looking at that two mile rule and saying because they can't fulfill runs, they're having to have more and more people report to communal bus stops. I'm hopeful that doesn't manifest here, um but I don't know what the driver shortage um will result in, you know, it's kind of a long.
Court rate would have been a safer drop off than the side of Mount Salem. I mean, but court rate is further than two miles of your whatever.
Yeah.
But at least that's a communal stop and you're not on the side of the road like.
So then what happens when I have to park my car at this bus stop and I get reran? Who would be responsible?
I'm not a legal expert, I would say the person who reran it.
Yeah. Okay. Not the board.
So so Mr. Goll, you're gonna follow up?
Yeah, like I said, one or two of the points that you brought up um triggered something in my 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 thought process and I just want to follow up on that, I'll be in touch.
And again, the board has been told by the bus company that they won't do it and you're hearing something different, so we need to get to the bottom of that as well. But thank you both so much for coming out here in your time and being thorough. Um are there any other audience remarks?
I have them.
Yes, sir.
So sorry I was late, I coach football, so I might have missed some of the things that were already brought up, I don't know if that matters or not.
You go right ahead.
You look for for multiple things, so um.
Yes, I'm sorry, sir, if you could state your name, Mr. Antelli.
Oh, my name is Anthony Antelli, I have a son in uh Wannich uh elementary school, um.
And you're and you live in Wannich?
Yes. So um I guess I'm concerned about the opt out letter. Firstly, I I feel like um that if that was, because I I've already talked to probably a dozen parents just because I do coach. And feel like it was kind of slipped in there uh at the bottom of the uh month, maybe the monthly letter or whatever, because once I talked to a lot of parents, they're like, what are you talking about? And I'm like, yeah, it's all the way down at the bottom of the letter after, you know, uh red ribbon weed and this and that and a whole bunch of other things. And it was at the bottom and I feel like I think from what I can gather amongst our community, that there's a lot of people pretty concerned about what's what's going on in that uh in the whole health education uh uh thing and for series of an issue that it seems to be probably more nationwide, I would think that that should have been a letter that should have come by by itself.
Yeah, so just just to clarify that, that's kind of like a pro, that was a proactive email in that most scenarios for that instruction won't happen till the very end of the school year, the exception to the middle school because they move in marking periods. So down, I don't know, April, May, when that happens, Dom will bring home a note.
Okay.
And hard copy.
Okay, I'm just letting you know, wait, once I saw it, I started talking to people and people were like, what, wait a minute, where?
Yeah, yeah, no, no. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm literally starting to look through the, oh my god, and and so so I I think that was that was something that I wanted to address as far as it goes. Um what I want, what happens then um with with the opt out? Or just say there's more people that opt out than 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 choose to to go along with this. The madness is I always what I have to say, because it's just 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 craziness uh honestly.
Yes. So some some of it's always gone on, like at the Wannich school, we used to do hygiene lessons, but kind of income, some of that stuff, right?
Right.
But what would happen is you'd have a small number of kids whose parents, even back then, were opt out of the circumstance and you give them an alternate assignment in an alternate setting. Right, so if you had some sort of disproportional result where the opposite happened, you we would flip that process.
Okay, so 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 it's not, because I feel like we're we're as a community trying to cater to such a very, very small percentage with this we're going into this gender based stuff and this, you know.
Yeah, the only distinction I would make, and the board's been really diligent in our curriculum committee meetings, trying to take that perspective into account and how we deliver that instruction. We're really not trying to cater anybody, it's the state of New Jersey saying these are the lesson standard.
Right, right, yeah, go ahead.
Um how I I'd like to say that I think that if it gets flipped, because I mean, I had kids in school for a long time. And yeah, it's it was a very small number. Now, a lot of people have come out and they're starting to talk about this and it's opt out, seems like a lot of people want to do it, opt out. Um on a personal level, that's making me feel pretty good. And what I think might make a difference is that if we have more people opting out than wanting to do it, then I would hope that we would need to report that to someone, I don't know who, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I would I would report that for you to the county who would probably filter it up to the state, but
To the county.
I would report to the league.
To my knowledge, nobody's required about that.
Yeah, can can you just get into the state at this point, there's so many parents are irritated about it.
But but what I'm saying is that if the parents, if the majority are doing this, then I would like for our district to report it.
We need to see how people.
That you know what, we had to implement this and obviously we got proof here, people have been.
I would be, I would be more willing to do that, you know.
Yeah, see, so.
You could you could potentially, you know, there's a lot of technology based tools in society now
Try that way.
that foster democracy and free voice with petitions and things like that.
What could be?
Yes.
You can cultivate a tuition petition.
It's just very big, also it's it's vague, so you know, you like you you when you look at the letter and you say, alright, we're gonna do this, you know, family, uh health, uh gender identity, this. Then we're going into that, what is, so how do you, how do parents are are we supposed to sit back as parents and be like, alright, go ahead? Well, I mean, there's gotta be some type of um um I guess breakdown of what the curriculum really, really is. Because I don't want to say that I want to be open minded, I think one of the most important things we gotta teach our kids is kindness across the board. But I'm definitely not gonna force my kid to to play make believe and and jump on that bandwagon, I won't do that.
I would do it, yeah.
Um I um so.
So the entirety of it is online, you can take some time with it, go through it, like Mr. Puppa, your child's not gonna receive that instruction potentially until the end of the year.
Okay, okay, so so you're saying i- in the letter, it's it's much more clarified.
Those were what we tried, and maybe you missed that part, the what we tried to do was highlight some of the things that people might, you know, zero in on. Just to kind of give you a little bit of exposure and then say, here, it's all on a on a website.
Okay, and 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 obviously, if you, some of it's gonna be based on the individual teacher, their perspective of things and how it goes, I mean, this is.
Uh actually, you know, I don't discount what you're saying, but Mrs. Simalakis, the director of curriculum, worked really, really hard with our region, namely Frankfurt's curriculum, a curriculum director and our board, our curriculum committee, to kind of like, um here is a controversial topic. Here's what we're gonna do with it, right, like maybe uh and I'm overgeneralizing, but here's a controversial topic. What we're gonna do is define, give you the definition, and then if kids have questions, go home and ask your parents, that kind of thing. So it kind of delineates that in the in the guide.
Okay.
I mean, you you.
If you want to be a pole tomorrow.
You have to realize skepticism just because of, I mean, if you watch the news from like, you see some of the craziness that's going on and and it's uh it's, you know, it's it's definitely concerning.
I guess.
Um one of my other concerns was is that we're uh like cap this cashless uh cashless, the kids can't go to school with money, cashless things, I feel like I mean, it's it's gotta be clearly obvious by the bad things that have happened all over the over the place. We just keep moving in directions of taking life opportunities that are on everyday basis in the real world and taking it away from the kids, why I why would we do that?
Yeah.
Cash, cash is a good thing.
I.
I mean, it results in math and responsibility and there's a lot of good things that come from it, I mean, at least when I was growing up at the.
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't, you know, I can't tell you, I mean, any decisions about getting rid of cash personally. I don't know, you know, I have to examine food services and doing some, that's a private vendor we use. Um I can tell you as far as like the COVID piece, uh you know, I don't discount anything to do, people who've lost somebody to COVID or faced a challenge with COVID. But at the school level, the board and the administration have been really strong and proactive about trying to bring back everything we had prior to COVID. You know, Dom doesn't experience it, but we just had a um activity night Sussex Middle School, I want to say, I don't know, two hundred, hundred and sixty kids hanging out here at night, dancing and basketball and and all kinds of good stuff. And we have the uh, you know, we've also authorized things like drunk or treat and um you know, various celebratory functions, we have assemblies back. So nothing relative to COVID would not use as much.
Well, that's why it was uh it was written in there, like it was said, touchless, we're trying to stay touchless and and
There's other. Yeah.
It's called contactless.
Yeah, contactless or whatever, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if maybe you referring to something that our food service vendor is is implemented on their operational end that I I just would have nothing to do with COVID as far as I'm concerned. I don't speak for them. Um and there are opportunities, you know, you you haven't been to board meetings, but the boards talked a lot about trying, and I started the the meeting off by trying to bring things or ideas like location back into education here, give kids different opportunities. Things like woodshop or home ec where you're learning to balance checkbooks and things like that. And then I had started at the Wannich school, school store, which I know they just got operational again this year, where kids are managing the store and exchanging money with other kids, and that's hands on. Um I encouraged Dom to buy some stuff there, I think, you know, when I was there, it was every Wednesday.
Oh.
Uh, that's.
Not plugging.
And and the middle school has a Trex program, the kids can join that, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So Trex will culminate into a function where kids uh make a product and then we have a big event in the uh gymnasium where they sell the products. And uh everybody from the community can come in and buy the products. Again, not a plug, but you know.
I have a question. You can send the kid with cash though, right?
Yes, but there's no change.
Right, but they don't get it back. They don't get any change back, they don't get it back. It's just.
They don't.
You're gonna add it to the card?
Yeah, it gets it gets added, whatever you send them with, just gets added to the card and that's 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 it. And then once.
That's the vendor though, that's not us, that's.
I would like to.
Well, somebody had to agree with you, I don't know.
I would like to point out that my youngest doesn't realize the card is money. So she says, don't worry, you don't have to pay for it. I just swiped my card.
Yeah. I'm just gonna point out that Mrs. Gold does the same thing with me.
So she has no clue cards. And that's what we're teaching them about, just just swipe, that's what she said, don't worry, you don't have to pay, I just swiped.
That's prob, that's. Yeah. Another life skill that we can probably incorporate into curriculum.
So I got one one last question. Where where are we as far as, so uh I have, I feel like I'm in the dark with Dom's teacher, Liker, met went to uh back to school night.
I haven't seen you in a while. I've been at a Lawrence school, I haven't seen you, buddy.
But where are we as a as an overall spectrum in math? Because the she said, you know what, I don't send any math homework home because the remarks I've gotten back from parents, she goes, I I or math, because I made the mistake, my mistake, I I let this, I I let this once I, my son, my oldest son started coming home and I I'm like, this is not math, this is craziness. And and I opted out and just let the school take over. And my son went from being good at math and enjoying math to struggling with math and hating math.
Yeah.
And so I said, you know what, the next one, I'm not doing this thing. So I taught Dom math the way I know it.
Yeah.
And but but at this point, he's not coming home with any math homework. I don't see anything from math, so I'm I'm in the dark about it. And where are we as a as a whole?
Yeah. Great question.
We're moving away from this, this.
Math? No, we're still gonna have math.
No, I mean. Common core.
So so ironically, Mrs. Demalakis gave a presentation about some of the math results. Um, third grade's doing really well and then we have to focus on other grades, generally attributable to COVID and not having school consistently and things like that. Um, common core math was in the news for a while and I can't, you know, use that kind of language. Uh. Then, New Jersey, ironically, when Governor Christie was still in office, I believe, so however long that was, the go-to terms maybe, transitioned away from common core math. They moved to the New Jersey state learning standard, so common core math went by the wayside for New Jersey. You know, I can't comment on other states, I just don't know. Uh, but we do not follow that common core, you know, if you're still seeing that on the news and things like that, is definitely instructional strategies, I'll say, that have evolved. Um, you know, using my own kids, for example, I have boys in fourth grade and uh my one boy, two weeks ago, I was talking to him about something and he uh, I don't know, he asked, or I, somebody said three times eight and he gave me the wrong answer. And I was like, buddy, you don't know your times table? What's the problem here? Um, I said, are we still, are we still writing out multiplication times tables? Like when I was in third grade, Mrs. Popernik, I was just having this conversation with other teachers today. In RTI, I mean, you used to have your write-out, your times tables and it was old school, but you know, I know my times tables at this point. Um, so there's different instructional strategies, they evolve, but I think the conversations that we have as a board curriculum committee is how to balance the old school things you knew worked well with kind of these newer trends and coming up with appropriate answers. So we have those conversations. And I think, I know, Mrs. Woody would probably say she loves hearing perspectives like this. I don't know if I really answered any of your questions, or I just danced.
Let's roll. No, 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 it's 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 it's, I'm just curious why I'm not seeing the homework or or like I I could see if if we were stuck in this common core why the commons would be there, because I mean, it's like, you know.
Yeah, I would have to check in on, I you know, please don't use the name of a teacher or anything like that, but I'd check in with Dom's um classwork and see exactly what's going on. You know, first portion of the school year, I know we're towards the October, but you're doing a lot of assessments, you're integrating your instruction with assessments. So you know, and people have different perspectives on homework. The boards, you know, over time in my district, my time in the district rather, their opinion of homeworks evolved differently, you know, where someone might think homework, yeah, you know, you gotta do homework, somebody else might think it's overloading a student, you know, so.
No, no, I I mean, I like the idea that it's not there, but I I I just feel left in zone.
Yeah. You don't like, you don't want, uh, the thing is clarified, cause I was, I got this conversation thinking I gotta hammer Dom with more homework.
No, I just like the idea of knowing what's going on, to know, know, not seeing it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Antilli.
Are there any other audience remarks? Alright, uh, seeing none, we will move on to the board secretary's certification, please.
Pursuant to NJAC six A twenty-three A dash sixteen point one oh C three, I certify that as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of NJAC six A twenty-three A dash sixteen point one oh A.
Thank you, Mrs. Riker. Now we will move on to the approval of board minutes for September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two regular and executive session. Looking for motion, please. Thank you, looking for a second. Thank you, any discussion on the board minutes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yeah.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
We have no need for executive session session on agenda items, so we'll move on to the presentation of agenda items, please.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. Uh, under personnel, I'd like to move items one through twenty-four. A number eight, I'm just correcting, should read October seventeenth, not October tenth, and I'm pulling number ten, the candidate withdrew.
I'm.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on personnel? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under policy, I'd like to invite number three. No motion.
Any discussion on policy? Roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Barry? Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under finance, I'd like to invite number one through twenty-five.
Looking for motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, any discussion on finance? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under special services, I'd like to invite number one through ten. Looking for motion.
Motion.
Looking for a second? Any discussion on special services? Roll call, please.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under curriculum, I'd like to invite number one. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on curriculum?
Yeah, should we um, should we um omit some of those that did not occur?
Wouldn't be a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Ten thirteen and ten seventeen twenty-two, um, difficulty in person.
Yeah, we said we're added, right? So they didn't even get originally.
Uh, yeah, no, they weren't added, they were they were on the original ones. That's not the Mathia.
Oh, okay.
But those two were arranged.
What, what did Israel?
Ten thirteen and ten seventeen.
Okay.
Uh, for the Ogden early wood burn soccer.
Thank you. Um, any other, any other discussion on curriculum? Alright, so omitting October thirteenth and October seventeenth, uh, the soccer games, um, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Referring to the addendum, under personnel, I'd like to move to items one through eight. Looking for a motion?
Thank you. Any discussion on personnel on the addendum? Roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Referring to the addendum, under policy, I'd like to invite number one.
Looking for a motion?
No motion.
Thank you, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on policy on the addendum? Roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Referring to the addendum, under finance, I'd like to invite number one through three.
Looking for a motion? Looking for a second. Looking for a second.
Ali, a mere second.
Any discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm referring to the addendum under special services, I'd like to invite number seven.
Looking for a motion?
No motion.
Looking for a second? Any discussion? Alright, roll call, please.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Nuss?
Yes.
Mrs. Woody?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Barry?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, uh, at this time, we will move on to unfinished business. Uh, Mr. Nuss, would you like to kick us off?
Have we heard any updates from the unemployment?
We have not, Mr. Nuss.
How many months have it been?
Probably about about two years.
Well, my first, I first disputed the second quarter of twenty twenty. So it's been over two years.
So, is is there anything that our attorneys could do?
Already written correspondence, we reached out to the department. I mean, at this point, board has held a delay in sending that payment.
Sure. I would just.
But we can certainly follow up and issue more correspondence.
I would say, I mean, how does everyone else do?
Yeah, I think we can follow up again.
Sure.
Any other unfinished business?
Well, funds for this business. Um, what's gonna be our game plan? You're gonna talk to the the bus company?
Just what I said.
Right?
Yeah, I'll follow up with our transportation coordinator and the bus company individual, Mrs. Gomperdick.
Maybe we can have a friendly conversation with the person you spoke to. And, you know what I'm saying, like, I I I just wanna make sure that if we're being told by the bus company that it's unsafe to do it there, but you're being told it's fine. I I I think someone is listening to it. I'll be happy to go on the call and question that. Do you know what I'm saying or no?
You want them both to be able to speak to each other to say, this is what I've said and this is what I've said and this is what.
Yeah, cause I, like, this is going back and forth.
Yeah, I think at this juncture, first, my next call is just to the company.
Alright. But my point is, I want some money, like, if I out, I'd like to get involved. Alright, you got it.
Right, um, any other unfinished business? I mean, new business?
Well, let me go back a little bit, it's probably. So, a while ago, we'll talk, um, years, I brought up an issue that certain teachers teaching a few classes in their day and other teachers teaching three or four more classes in a day. And I had it, you know, questioning that and it seems like that I'm hearing issues from the teachers again. And I I I I'd like to figure out how things are gonna change, cause I have a problem if you have a teacher teaching four classes and making excellent drivers and another teacher teaching seven classes. And like, you know where I'm going with this?
I don't.
So, I've been getting complaints that certain teachers don't do as much as other teachers.
From? Where were the complaints coming?
I'm I'm looking right here. Um. In particular school?
Okay.
Uh, yes, so the same same situation, old business. But I guess for years, if certain teachers are teaching almost twice as many classes, we have some teachers that aren't that are only teaching four or five classes in a day, like, it's not fair.
These aren't part-time.
Yeah.
Mrs. Riker.
Who's been on the board with me when when I had those issues? Is anyone?
I think I, I think I was.
So.
I was, I was not on the board, but I've always been a parent. Um, and I've always heard that. Yeah.
So, I just, I don't know.
So you'd be looking for me to find deficiencies going forward and how to utilize.
Yeah, because it's it's, I don't hear much, but now I'm hearing people complain that they're doing more than other people. And if, if.
When you tell me.
If that's the people, I'll tell you.
Okay. Um, so I mean, you know, a general idea, something you're you're throwing my way, just is like what I'm thinking of now is like, you know, I had RTI meeting today, are there people who have openings in their schedules where we can do um intensive instructional strategies? Um, you know, I'm just brainstorming solutions with you. And I was gonna ask Mrs. Riker, ironically, to elaborate on a seminar she got to go to, that things that we've been talking about with expansion, potential expansion, I know Mr. Ching is a big fan of too, is potential expansion of our pre-K program. And I think, you know, I've talked, I think publicly a little bit about it, not to instill any kind of concern, but there's very concrete things that would have to be done, that the community would have to embrace in order for something like that to happen. Again, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Riker to elaborate on a little further, but you need to free up room um and get the proper certificates for people to instruct more pre-K population, more of a pre-K population. So freeing up room, you know, um, and I wanna commend Mrs. O'Barry on pointing out and getting us into various facilities to check them out, one of the old Sussex Hospital, which ended up not being a good fit for us, but the the straightforward way I see to get more room is you potentially move grade levels and shift things around in the district. You'd have to move, like, say hypothetically, don't wanna create hysteria, but brainstorming, hypothetically, moving fifth grade to Sussex Middle School, moving second grade to Wannich School to free up more room in the Lawrence School for a pre-K population expansion. And there's all kinds of things that go into it. You have to have bathrooms in rooms, you have to have so many square feet in a room. So Lawrence School is almost conducive to that kind of environment. Um, so, connected to what you're saying that I'm thinking of in brainstorming, do we have people in areas where we might be able to make transitions, transition them around the district to take advantage of other people who have pre-K to three certification that we're not utilizing, cause that would be hard to come by? Um, and you need to increase the number of people you have. So just brainstorming with you, try to take advantage of that. But maybe Mrs. Riker, you can talk a little bit about what you were exposed to in that seminar?
Um, well, I think that you really just hit it. My takeaway was that it'll be extremely difficult to do this because you have to, your preschool population is twice your first grade population, so that would be approximately two hundred and twenty students. We would have to service those two hundred and twenty students within five years. With no more than fifteen kids in a classroom, so that's, um, you know, eighteen, eighteen classrooms
So now you're talking.
that you'd have to free free up. I don't know that we would have that space.
Yeah.
You would have to have the correct teacher, you'd have to have a teacher assistant in every room. We have a difficult time, you know, finding teacher assistants now. And and there's a whole other litany of staff. If you have too many people in the building, you need another school nurse, which we have a couple, you know, even getting substitute nurses now. So I think there's a lot of um things that need to be taken into consideration. The the troubling part of it is that the, let's just say we wanted to do this for next school year, the application period opens in August. You have to have your plan of how you're gonna serve everybody within five years. We would find out in September. We would have to open in October. So this budget cycle would have to plan for whatever room renovations, you'd really have to move the grade levels, even if we wanted to start small. So there's a lot of considerations. I think there's a lot of community engagement that has to take place. I think everybody has to be realistic about what we could do. You can start small, but. I think everybody has to be realistic about what we could do. You can start small, but by year five, if if that population is what the population is, we have to be servicing it to maintain our status with getting the money. And it's not a grant, it's actually additional state aid. So once you're in, they'll work with you to keep you in, but we have to have a solid plan of how we would do year one. And so the the application period is just troubling in that it isn't a little bit moved up so that it could start in September or you could at least have a budget cycle to plan for it. Once you found out, it it doesn't work that way. It's a little
And that's.
It's a little, I I don't know why it is that way, but it has to do with the state budget and the funding that they really so um, you know, it would be a tremendous asset to the community and all the things that probably what you were just gonna say, all the things that we're working on, the RTI, all those things, getting our students in our district as three and four-year-olds help the process of where they'll be and how they can move along in our district at a um, you know, a much much higher rate than maybe some of the students that went through the program.
And despite all the challenges I experienced firsthand, I grew up and taught in, it's formerly called an avid school district, right? So it's Garfield City or like um, you know, a Patterson or newer. And that avid designation gave them bags of money that uh, they're they're tax-based and increased. So the state New Jersey disproportionately funded them based on some legal rulings to give them um, you know, enhancements. So I don't know, I wanna say for twenty or twenty-five years, Garfield as an example, my hometown, has had free full-day pre-K, the equivalent of, you know, kindergarten class, full day, first grade, full day. Um, and what it does for a community, you know, you can imagine what you may have had to spend on things like childcare for three and four-year-old and what that would do for your um, you know, family income and freeing up time for families and you know, whether it would be, what how you use that time, whether continue um, being a homemaker or, you know, furthering your own education or placing in the workforce, all those kinds of things. I mean, it really enhanced the environment. And again, their taxes didn't increase disproportionately for that. Um, and then academically, what it did for kids, you know, with early intervention and things like that, I mean, it was ex- it had exponential uh, positive results. So if we could bring something like that to this community, I mean, I would think it would be remarkable, but it doesn't come without challenges. And you don't wanna give any, you you know, we have that.
I couldn't imagine the busing challenges.
Busing's in a, so we applied for this and it was rejected several years ago. Um, and we came, we went into it thinking we wanna start small. Um, and they didn't, you know, the feedback we had gotten was you need to, you know, plan for the inevitable of but at the same time, you know, Garfield City, my understanding is they're gonna build two new elementary schools and they, you know, acquired buildings and retrofitted buildings to house all the pre-K kids, you know, while I was teaching there and 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 growing up there. Um, and we just won't have that opportunity, like, we have to solve the problems ourselves.
Probably our aid probably went to pay for that.
Or taxes. In some way, or give taxes, yeah.
Um, Mrs. Riker, question on what Mr. Nuss was uh, saying regarding the teachers. Uh, contractually, uh, I think we could, Mr. Rest on the floor. Need to stop, but contractually, are aren't they required to instruct a certain amount of periods uh, a a day?
I think they're probably assigned responsibilities if they don't have an instructional period.
So it's okay.
Yeah, but if you could take advantage of that and assign them to something like RTI, depending upon like their certification during.
And they're they're doing that, yeah?
No, that's a brainstorm that I just do with Mr. Nuss.
Alright, um, is there any other unfinished business? Any new business? Right, oh.
I I just wanna say about like um, furthering on the activities that the schools had, that yes, we did have the activity nights since last month. Um, I think last month I said that we went, the Lawrence School did their family math night, the Lawrence School's had theirs. So um.
We wanna thank the Magic and the uh, the Eagle, the Eagle?
The, yeah, um, Magic, the Math Bug is back with us and um, the wanted eagle.
Eight appearances, yeah.
Um, so yeah, it was a lot of fun, a lot, big turnout, big big turnout. There's a trunk of tree.
Tomorrow.
Wanna help me out? Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Um.
Up at the Lawrence School.
Yeah.
I wanna say six thirty, maybe?
No, I think it's five to six.
Five to six.
I think it's yeah, five to six for anybody with um, which trunk of tree?
Five thirty.
Is it five thirty? Oh, okay. Well, see, if you got there at five, you'd be early. Um, and yeah, Mr. Nuss just said about traps, I think traps is is the glass is already starting, the actual um, event.
It's usually late in the year. Yeah.
Christmas time, hours?
Yes, yes, right around that time. So, um, yeah, I mean, I'm not in school, but I'm I'm excited to see everything coming back.
Popular guy.
You can't get the parents to do it, good luck getting the kids to do it, so.
Mr. Pivano, we're gonna let your kid use their phone and the rest can. Alright, uh, any other new business? Alright, seen none, we'll move on to audience remarks again. Members of the audience are invited to make brief comments about items on this agenda and matters of interest of this.
I I had a, I I I guess I had a question cuz I'm I'm trying to keep up with this here. I did hear that there was a a medical issue in 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 our classroom and that because of that, it was gonna be uh, the class trip was gonna be.
Geez, when a situation like that manifests, depending upon the need.
So are you saying that the class trip was canceled in your kid's situation?
Well, we, it was brought to our attention that they might not be able to do the class trip because they have someone with with medical needs, which, listen, I understand. It it it's a difficult situation, at the same time.
Who chose that? You're a kid or a parent?
No, the teacher. Um, so so I understand that, so, but I mean, there's, and I I, so we had someone volunteer that's a registered nurse and it's a no, can't do that. Board has to hire him, they have to be an employee and.
Yeah, I mean, so we did hire somebody, but in that circumstance, what I would say to the person is we've had substitute nurses posted for a very long time and they should apply to do that with us so they can do that and not just volunteer, but be compensated potentially. So I don't know who that is, but if you wanna give me a call tomorrow, let me know, that's great.
Thank you. Are there any other audience remarks? Um, at this time, we do need to go into executive session on non-agenda items. No action will be taken, it will be approximately twenty minutes. Um, you're free to stay, you're free to leave, but um, when we get out of there, we will live during our meeting. Um, can I get a resolution, please, Mrs. Riker?
Whereas pursuant to NJ SA ten four dash twelve B, the Sussex Managed Regional Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting at which the board discusses any of the matters described in NJ SA ten four dash twelve B one through nine. Now therefore be resolved that the Sussex Managed Regional Board of Education shall enter into closed session to discuss personnel matters. Now therefore be further resolved by the Sussex Managed Regional Board of Education that pursuant to NJ SA ten four dash thirteen B, the time when and the circumstances under which a discussion conducted in closed session can be disposed to the public is when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to enter executive session? For a second? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? Alright, we'll see you guys in about twenty minutes, and if you decide to leave.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, meeting adjourned. Thanks guys.